All right, well, ready to start with Daniel. Good evening, my name is Alejandro Blanco. I'm part of the multicultural health team in Western Sydney local district. And tonight the presentation, we're going to divide it. I will introduce the first 11, 10 slides and then Daniel will continue. Obviously, if Daniel's want to compliment what I'm saying, he will. Chibi and I same for him. What is the next slide? The purpose of the presentation is basically information about the virus has been designed for our general public and in line with the latest information for the therapeutic goods administration, regulation, the Australian government, Australian state government. So it's quite official, the information that you will find. What is, what we'll try to cover tonight is basically how the vaccine work? And how the vaccine can protect you? Why get vaccinated? There's a lot of question about the safety of the vaccine that we will try to answer your questions and how to, this is important, how to get the vaccine. And there's another point reliable, where you could get reliable information on the vaccine. Next slide. So what the vaccine do? Well, we could say mainly two things. One, it will increase exponentially your protection against virus. So as a person, you will be far better protected with one and the second doses. But not only that, the second, the second leg of this protection is that increases ability to go back to your normal life. But not only that, it protect the, it will, you vaccinating your, I mean, the vaccine will provide protection to the people you care about, friends, family and your community. And not only that, but it will help to the community to go back to what normal life used to be a while ago. Next, now we're going to show you this video that could be, has been done by health. It could give you a, an idea about how the vaccine work and your immune system.
Effective COVID-19 vaccines will offer protection against the virus, helping to prevent death and serious illness. But how do they actually work? Like other vaccines such as the flu shot, COVID-19 vaccines will be given with a needle. This triggers an immune response in the body, which is the body's natural way of defending itself. The vaccine will strengthen your immune system by training it to recognize and fight against the virus that causes COVID-19. Vaccines may contain either killed or weakened versions of the virus that causes the disease, or a small part of the virus, such as a protein. There is no risk that you will get the disease from a vaccine. When your immune system recognizes this virus or parts of it in the vaccine as being foreign, it responds by creating memory cells and antibodies that will protect you against future infection or disease. As a result, you'll be less likely to have severe COVID-19 symptoms after a vaccination. To learn more, visit health.gulf.au.
These three pictures, to give you more information and make more graphic following from the video, these three pictures gonna give you an idea of how the vaccine work. In the first picture, number one, you could see that the red figures are contagious, the green, the, sorry, the yellow one are not immunized, there is no vaccines around. So there's only people who are contagious and people who are susceptible or waiting to be, to get the virus. The second picture is only a few people has been immunized or getting the jab. Those are the blue ones. So you could immediately see the difference that the blue and the red, I mean, the red are getting smaller or less, more yellow guys. So the blue, even though are less and not many, this have an impact on the community. The third one is 80% of, 80 between 80 and 90% of people who received the vaccine. And you could see that the contagious people who are the red are really, really in the minority. The yellow one will are susceptible to be infected are into career minority. So as you could see, the impact of the vaccination is really, really important.
And just to add something into this one, as Alejandro has mentioned, is Daniel here? So it's probably the, the last one. So the last one was more blue people. So this is where we as a country are moving forward. Because by all means, the blue people represent people that are immunized, so they are immune. And the red people are people that are contagious. And, and the yellow people are people that are just like a normal people, like the way we were before the pandemic. So by all means, we have red people and we will still have yellow people because of some other reason. So yellow people will be there, let's say about kids that are not yet to be vaccinated at the moment. And maybe people that got other health issues that could not be vaccinated because of the health issues based on the recommendation from the own issue. So at the end, we will still have people in our community that we also need to protect. And by having that number of blue people, like let's say 80% as our prediction or where people of communities are, the whole country is moving forward, that now we are protected. And so it's so crucial for everyone here and to get vaccinated, so talk to your doctor and do the right thing by getting vaccination so that you can protect people who are vulnerable, like those that got other health issues that they cannot get vaccine, or maybe their kid, the younger one. So, and that's the way forward. So the last map, we're looking forward and that's where we are heading to as a nation. Thank you.
Keep in mind though, that even though you got, you got, you see a lot of blues, the vaccine is only one tool in the safety toolbox. Even though people are in the blues and vaccinated is a majority, you still need to keep some simple, simple, simple measures of safety, like washing your hands or use the mask. So keep, I mean, see the vaccine as a one big tool, but not the only one. And it's some complimentary with other measures as well. So how does the vaccine protect me and the community? It's very simple, more people are vaccinated, more people can fight the virus. And if you have the ability to fight the virus, the main thing is going to be you stop spreading the virus. So build contribute to a community immunity. The second important thing is that you will stop or slow the capacity of the virus to change, to mutate and become a new variant. That's very, very important as well. Who can get the vaccine? Everybody. The vaccine is free for everybody regardless of you have Medicare car or refugee status or visa status. And it's completely free. So you go into the vaccination hub, close to you, talk to your GP or chemist close by and you will have the right to be vaccinated. It's completely voluntary. I mean, the vaccine, nobody gonna force you to get the jab. It's completely voluntary, but as you will see, when you finish the presentation, it's extremely, extremely important to have the majority of Australians with the vaccine. Not only that, but think, not only that, but can you go back a little bit? If, think about your family, yourself, your community, being vaccinated, you really contribute to make them safe. As you could see in the press and the media and the rest of it, some people asking, can they wait or some people are, I don't know, reluctant. But again, the problem up to maybe June this year, before you could say, okay, there's some times, but we got this new Delta variant from the virus. It come up around June to Australia and we found that it's extremely, extremely infectious. It's around 60 to 70% more infectious as the previous variant, Alpha. And it's spread very, very quickly. So the risk of get the virus increased, get to the, being hospitalized increased with this Delta variant. So the COVID vaccine, it will protect you. The best protection will be done, will be get by the two doses. So you will have the first doses and depend on the vaccine, either AstraZeneca, Pfizer. You will have a period from the first to the second one. Daniel will explain you that. Daniel? All right, okay, what happened if we get the COVID-19? I mean, there's, there's a, there's a few symptoms there, fever, running nose, headache, diarrhea, sore throat. There's another very serious symptom that includes chest infection, inflammation of your organs, blood clot, bleeding, stroke and obviously sometime in some cases dead. Not everybody got those symptoms, but there is a very high risk for you to get part of that symptom or even dead. For pregnant, for pregnant women is, is doubly important because the pregnant women's are more susceptible or the increase, in increased risk to being hospitalized, being admitted to intensive care and needing some support for breathing, which is three times higher. During the pregnancy, the complication for the baby increased around 1.5 to two times higher of being early born, 37, before 77, 37 weeks of pregnancy. And obviously, the need of admission of the baby, the newly born is three times higher.
Okay, so this part here, as Alejandro mentioned before, we have two type of vaccine now in Australia. So there's one more being approved, but you still would be started from next week, Moderna. And I think you saw that on the news and, and the federal government talk about it. So we're not gonna talk about that today, but let's talk about these two types of vaccine we have today, the Pfizer and AstraZeneca. So Pfizer has been approved for people, as we recommended, for people under the age of 60 years old, which including pregnant women. And has been approved for 12 years plus. So, and you got to have two doses for Pfizer as well. Now is the, the time frame is between three weeks up to eight weeks now. So when you can have your first dose, after you had your, second dose, after you have your first dose. So that's for Pfizer. And for AstraZeneca, has been recommended for people adult 60 years and over here in Australia. And has been initially approved for 18 years plus. So it's still, you require two doses for AstraZeneca. The first one, and then the second one would be between four to eight weeks. So that is the time frame you can have your second one. Personally, I have my AstraZeneca in April. And that was before, it was like a free, for a month. And so, and I'm under that age that was recommended by that time. And so, and now it's okay for anyone 18 years plus to have AstraZeneca. And I've got one more slide to talk about later on. And these two vaccine, they're all effective and you need at least two doses for them to be effective and to protect you against COVID-19. What they does, they reduce your risk of community transmission. So it helps you not to spread the virus into the community or to your family one. So it's quite important for us to have both of them. So do the COVID-19 vaccine work? That's a question a lot of people ask, because there's that doubt. And it has proved in real life and then during clinical trial, they both work. So they reduce risk of COVID-19, both Pfizer and AstraZeneca, the one that we have here. And in real world, we have seen that in the UK, United Kingdom, because we here in Australia, we're using the same vaccine that are being used in the UK. And the lie, or, and all the outcome or the experience or the research is coming out there is also, we also have to defend on that because we're using the same vaccine. So it proved it worked in UK, in real life situation. So they both reduce your risk of getting COVID-19. And then they also reduce your risk of being hospitalized from COVID-19. And that's from England and its Scotland as well. And they also reduce your risk of passing that to somebody, for example, your household or people that are around you. So that mean it's quite important for you to get vaccinated so that you prevent yourself and you prevent your loved one against the COVID-19. So this question as well, do the COVID-19 vaccine work against the Delta variant? Which is other question that people ask. Yes, it has proven that it worked because Delta variant is a new one, but having either Pfizer or AstraZeneca, it help you, it protect you and it protect your loved one. Because once you protect yourself, you also protect somebody closer to you. And then it also reduces your risk of being hospitalized. Same thing, both AstraZeneca. And it's also proved that in England, because we have seen the benefit of these two vaccines in the UK. So the, the thing is, if go out and get your vaccination, so you got to have those two doses for you to get full protection. So that's quite important. Now, this question is always a kind of interesting question because people ask, so what else do I need to know? Does this vaccine serve others, or do they contain that? Yes, people got those question around, but what research has shown that having COVID-19 vaccine cannot give you COVID itself. So by getting vaccinated, you cannot get COVID. There's a lot of confidences out there, people, you know, listen to through social media or other fake, fake news media. So, but you cannot get COVID by getting vaccinated. It does not contain those, those vaccine, do not contain genetic material or cannot change your DNA. So people presume that was misinformation out there, it changed DNA. No, does not interfere with your DNA. And that's based on real life research. And it do not contain animal product, meat, eggs product and does not cause infertility as people presume. So all these two vaccine here we have in Australia, they have been researched vigorously and they prove to be more safe for all of us to use. So the question is, because there's a lot of information out there that we can listen to. And I know we can listen to other information overseas because Australia is a multicultural nation. So we have our own news channel here and all because of through social media as well, we're also getting news overseas, which sometimes are not relevant to what we have here. So advice from the health is that use factual information whereby you know the right source, which I'll show you in a minute whereby you can get those accurate information for you to make your decision. Because a lot of people are making decisions based on information they got on the internet or the, they listen to overseas, which is not a general, there's, there's no evident base with those information. And answer to some of the common question here, if you speak other language other than English, so you can find more information in your own language, in up to three languages. So through our health information and our health online. And there's a lot of misinformation there. So we advise you to base your decision based on right source, which I will show you in a minute. So what to do next and how you can help? So the question is, everyone will have a different view about the benefit and risk of all these two vaccine. But it's always based on your medical history. So what information, what is important to you or how you see that? And so, but the, the main advice here, you start that conversation with your, with your, with your doctor or health expert. Because they'll be able to guide you and they'll be able to give you more information that could be accurate information. We come from reliable source based on evidence, based on medical research and talk to your doctor. Your doctor knows your medical history. Your doctor know you more than anyone. And your doctor can't tell you the benefit of you having the vaccine. If there's risk involved, your doctor will tell you based on your medical history. So recently, we got changes because of AstraZeneca. It was up to, so it was not recommended for people under the age of 40. And then recently, there have, there have been some changes from a tag that anyone 18 years plus can have AstraZeneca. And given the information, like given the outbreak we have now, so it's quite crucial for everyone to go out there and have your vaccine, whatever vaccine you have, because these vaccine are all safe, have all been tested in clinical trial and they all working in real world. So whatever vaccine you have, so you better go and have that because we don't have time to wait, COVID is there and the only way out of COVID is for us to get vaccinated. So anyone 18 years plus, you can have AstraZeneca. Talk to your GP, because your GP know your history. So if there's anything that will prevent you from getting AstraZeneca, then your GP will tell you. And all the GP are working harder to support everyone, to support you and to support somebody as well. So it's good to respect advice from your GP and talk to them always because they're the person that know your medical history. So at the moment, anyone between the age of 16 to 59 years old, within the LGA of concern, can book Pfizer from all the hub. So either from Olimb Park or from Aquarapil or from other areas based on closer to you. Where people from Cumberland or from Western Sydney here, this for LGA and the Western Sydney local district, we can go to Olimb Park, we can book them there. You can also book with your GP or pharmacy. So, and, 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 and that's the recent information. So this one here, additional information that we just thought would be good for you to know is just about what do we mean by close contact? So what is, what do we mean by secondary contact? What do we mean by casual contact? And so it's quite good for you to know this thing. So a close contact person is someone who has been close with a COVID positive person and you might have been impacted with, with the virus. And so what happened, once you've been there, so you get information from Neosol, Neosol Warehouse, that you are close contact. So they will send you SMS, because if you identify, they will send you SMS. And you get that message from them telling you that you've been a close contact for a person with a COVID-19. So what do you do from there? You need to get tested, go for test straight away. And then you isolate for 14 days regardless of your outcome. They will give you instruction about when to go for your first, your first one goes straight away. Then they will give you instruction about when to go back for another one. And then you have to remain in isolation until you see your, you receive, you, you get your 14 days and you are confirmed negative for those 14 days period. And someone who is also like a secondary contact is for your contact as well as a close contact. So someone that been in contact with you while you've been with that close contact is also a secondary contact from the, it's not like a direct close contact with the person that got impacted. But because they have been close to you, as you are also close contact, they also get instruction from the, from the Neosol warehouse. Or if you can identify them as well, it's good also to tell them so that they can go and get tested. And again, you need to isolate until they get their, their results. And that one, so they can either be told to get maybe two tests and then once they got negative, then they can go out. And if you are a casual contact, there are also two way for you, you know that you are casual contact. So Neosol help will send you a text message or they can call you that you've been a close contact, casual contact for, 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 for casual contact in either location, either a shopping center or maybe somewhere whereby you met somebody. And that's through the, the, the QR code that we also registered. And or maybe if you identify that yourself as well, because you, if you look at the information online on the website help and then you identify that, you can also isolate straight away. And that, the message could get you later on, maybe four days' time. So what you need to do, go and get tested straight away. And then you isolate and get other people to know that you've been a casual contact. And then, and then wait until you get your result. When you get a negative test, then you also need, you also need to follow the instruction from the Neosol help about your next one. So the key important thing here, so whenever you receive your information from Neosol well, you need to follow those instructions. Important thing for you to do, you need to wear a mask within the same room if you're living with other people. And do not leave your house until you get your negative result. So. So, and you also need to monitor your symptom. If you get COVID symptom and like running nose, flu symptom like, you also need to isolate until you get your negative test result. Now, so the question about food and other thing, a lot of people are asking this question as well, but this is critical because a lot of people that, a lot of families that are positive or maybe in isolation is a huge number nowadays. And so people are a bit confused of what to do. And so sometimes what they do, you just go and do thing and have other people. So the only way for you to do, you need to, so how, how will contact you? Let's say if someone is in isolation, so they will get contact from the health and then they'll be given information about what to do and what not to do. And, but it may take some time for them to contact you. So, and if you are concerned or you need food, you need to contact a public health unit and tell them what you are need. And if you don't get through that number because it's too busy, so keep trying, keep trying, it will go through. The other closer people, the council. So maybe talk to council and they can also see how they can support you. And for family members, it's not a good idea for you to deliver food. Yeah, because if you deliver that food, it might not be good for you, might not be safe for you to go to, to those places. So the only way for you to do, so you better make, be in contact with the council as well. They can support you. I know from Black County Council that a group of people that put themselves together, but they're working together with the police and police giving them that clear and like a permit for them to drop food. And then they're also working with, with, with help in how they can deliver those food, you know, in a safe way, because you also need to be protected. And while you're helping somebody, you need to look after yourself. And so that's not a highway for you to do. So a thing like that one, like knowing when to deliver the food and when to leave it and when to get away from that. So you need to be advised and you know, to get some support around that one. And the council or health can support you around that. So gathering, so gathering is, is not like a, it's now coming slowly. So today we got some good news, but not we're seeing for people outside the top LGA. So today we've got some good news, uh but not we're seeing for people outside the top LGA. So they got a bit of a of a good news. Uh people who's in our top LGA that are LGA or concerned. So if if a family got their double dose, they can go and and do outdoor, outdoor for adult. With double jab, the people that are pulled vaccination, you can go outdoor and 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 access outdoor setting. Uh but that was in the top uh, the the five kilometres is still. So but that's only household members. So someone from another household, even though they have double jab, within this LGA of concern, let's say within Parramatta. Cumberland LGA, Blackland LGA, the ill child, they're not allowed to gather. But people outside the top LGA, uh five of them can gather outside. That means people from another household. That are full of vaccinations, they can gather, but not yet in our LGA. So where to get reliable information? So we can get more accurate information from uh this website here. The Australian Government, the Panel of Health, and then NMSO's Well Health and NMSO's Well Government. And National Centre for Immunization Research and Surveillance, and then Therapeutic Good and Suction. So these are reliable information whereby they're being updated from now. Uh and if there's any information you want, you get that there. So most of the uh information that are translated, you also get them there. So it's good for you always to go for a right source before you make your decision about vaccine.
Look, maybe Daniel, if you allow me, it's very, very important considering that you live in Cumberland LGA. That when you go to any of these um reliable information sources. You will have a lot of information in community languages or you could use um interpreter service. So don't don't dismay if you uh, if your English is not that good, because News as Well Health. Um website, for instance, got um uh the main language cover including Chinese, Arabic, Spanish. Um a lot of information in that, not only in um in pamphlet formats, but um we got some um. Recordings in community languages that you could listen to. Keep in mind that SBS, um the multicultural um television station. Um have um very, very good information about the vaccine and the Covid in different community languages as well. Um so if you need to use uh the telephone, uh like um the telephone lines for information. You could use the TIS, which is a national service translating and interpreting service, um and start it from there.
Yeah, thank you, Alejandro. So for the sake of time as well, we just, I think we're almost done with this one and then we'll give you time to ask questions. So the the best advice we can give you as your healthcare provider, talk to your former doctor, uh talk to your medical specialists. But any information you need around your vaccination. So and and you can call National Coronavirus and Covid Nineteen Help Line. So that number eighteen hundred zero two zero uh zero eight zero. And then as Alejandro mentioned, so TIS is there, which is a translating and interpreting services. So you can call that which uh one three one four five zero. And you ask the language you want to talk to, and then they'll put you through. That one is available seven days a week. So important thing for us also to remember here, so even though you got your full uh vaccine, vaccine uh jab. So you pull a vaccination, we still have to practice good uh self-Covid, Covid self behaviours. So which is uh get tested once you have like full life symptom, go for test. And practice hand again, so every time, so which is washing your hair with soap and water a little twenty second. And you check and I check out, this is important, it's also uh quite good for you to do for yourself and for others. So maintain uh one point five metres or two square metres and wear mask, which is now mandatory for you once you leave your house. So and outdoor, indoor, unless you may be exercising. And then important, if you have not uh been vaccinated, go and get your jab, your jab right now. So that's quite important. And that's the only way for us to guard off uh this pandemic. So thank you. Uh get the jab for to protect yourself, to protect your family and your community. So it's a time for us now to to get your question. So if you have any question. So you feel free to uh to add those question. Uh Stephen is here and he will also help us to. Respond to some of the question you may ask.
There's very interesting, uh there's a few interesting question in the chat. Um.
Thank you guys. I might just introduce Stephen first. Um so Dr. Stephen Corbett um is joining us as well this evening. He's the Director of the Centre for Population Health. Um and along with Alejandro and Daniel, they'll be able to answer some questions this evening. Um I will go through the ones in the chat first, um and then I'll just ask if everyone can. Uh if they have a question, use the reaction box at the bottom of Zoom to put your hand up. Um and then I'll just ask you to unmute when we get to your turn. Um so just bear with us as we get through it. Um hopefully we answer your question along the way. If not, um we'll definitely try and grab it tonight. So. Uh first one, we've got a, so uh for children that are under twelve at the moment. Um is there any information available at the moment in terms of what will be happening from a vaccine perspective? Uh Dr. Stephen, you might be on mute at the moment.
Is is Stephen around or?
There we go. I think you're off mute now. Uh we can't hear you at all, Dr. Corbett. Uh Daniel, Alejandro, are you, are you able to provide any on that, information on that?
Uh so what uh, what was the question?
Uh so for children that are under twelve, um is there any information at this stage uh around being able to get the vaccine? Or any information on when that might become an option?
Oh, so as far as uh what I know, so the tag which is the border that approved a vaccine. So they're still working on that. So the only information available now is uh for twelve years to fifteen years. They're given Moderna, so which will happen soon. So but anyone under under the age of twelve. So it's still not uh being worked out. And if there's anything, then a tag will still do some update um about that.
Well, there is some experience overseas that they're looking into it, but it's nothing that has been approved officially in Australia. So we are talking about from twelve years old upwards, but not downwards yet.
Excellent. Um so and here a question about eligibility. So uh we had uh Nasrullah, I believe. Um who has tried to book an appointment for Pfizer, uh but told wasn't eligible. Um and they're currently a student. Um is there any sort of basic criteria around eligibility that you can uh let the crowd know about? Or how to actually check you about your eligibility?
Oh, all right. So was uh eligibility, yeah, there's like eligibility checker on on online. And there's a lot of changes as well from now to now, like the first one. So when Pfizer was available, so it was changed between which which was under the LGA of of concern. So between the age of sixteen uh to thirty nine, and then it changed to forty nine and then out to fifty nine, within the LGA of concern. So anyone under that, between the age of sixteen to fifty nine, within LGA, top LGA, can access Pfizer. And then anyone so across the state and so can access AstraZeneca. So as long as you are age eighteen years and fifteen and eighteen years plus, so you can access AstraZeneca. Anyway, that's through your GP, pharmacy, or to within the main hub, that being I didn't survive the NMSO's Well Health. Uh so it depends with age, so depending with your age where you sit and depending also where you wanna uh to get there. Sometimes you can try booking online and then because if things are booked and then you cannot uh get your appointment on time. And that's because of maybe booking and the availability at the centre. So maybe you can check it elsewhere.
And there's no uh, you don't require Medicare card or anything to qualify, do you?
Uh for, let's say, if if you go, if you go to your GP or or pharmacy, so they might ask you for Medicare card. But if you don't have Medicare card, you can go to the hub. So either like anything that owned by the state, you go like Olympic Park. They'll they'll just, they they can allow you to get your jab without Medicare, as long as you can get other uh ID. Like a personal ID that can show you as you, to confirm your identity, then that should be okay.
I might, if you guys don't mind, could you share the link in the chat for the eligibility checker? Um that might assist Nasrullah with finding a spot to get the vaccine.
Sure.
Thank you. Um yeah, we've also um got one here uh from Sonia. Uh are you able to explain the difference between mRNA and non mRNA Covid nineteen vaccines?
I think, Dr. Stephen?
That's a very technical question, probably for Dr. Stephen.
Hello, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, hi. Hi, everyone. Sorry about the technical problems. Uh um. The difference between an mRNA vaccine and a um an AstraZeneca, yes, um. The mRNA is a little bit like a um. A template. Uh it's it it, as soon as it's injected into your body, it starts making uh antibodies. It it starts making the protein uh that that forms the the spike on the outside of the virus. And that and and making that protein stimulates your body to to have an immune reaction against the virus. Uh the the AstraZeneca works in a slightly different way in that it actually has a very harmless virus. With the s- with with some uh the same template on it, but it it's not. It the the virus in AstraZeneca um i- is is a whole virus. It's it's a benign virus with the same template on it. It's 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 a subtle difference, but they both, they both have the same effect. They produce the protein. Uh that your bot, that your own immune system then reacts to and and that immune reaction protects you from getting uh seriously unwell with the virus. I hope that explanation is clear enough for everyone.
Uh Dr. Corbett, just to confirm, what do you mean by benign virus?
Uh it's it's a vehicle for, it it's it's a vehicle that that uh the the virus doesn't survive in your body at all. Uh it's just, it's it's a viral particle which is a vehicle for um a piece of DNA which makes uh. The protein that you need to stimulate your immune system. The virus does not survive in your body.
Excellent. And just following on from that, do any of the vaccine side have side effects that uh relate to kidney in any way, kidneys in any way?
No, I saw that question. Uh uh no, it's it's not clear that they do. Uh um. Uh um we do know that people with kidney disease are very, very uh vulnerable to the effects of um of of Covid itself. Uh but um kidney disease has not been reported as a major side effect of any of the vaccines that are available to Australians.
Excellent. So uh Dana's also asked, the time between Pfizer has been stated as six weeks.
Yeah.
Um and she's actually had her second one three weeks later. Um is there any further information on the timeframe between the two jabs?
Yeah, the recommendation is from three to six weeks. Um in in some places, um they've they've made it six weeks. The 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 outcome in terms of immunity is probably about the same. Um. In some countries, they delayed it for six weeks because of a shortage of virus, a shortage of vaccine. Uh um uh so so just allows you to space out the vaccinations a little bit more. But the recommendation is is between three and six weeks for each jab.
Excellent. Um and uh we've got from Lisa. Um how long after the onset of Covid nineteen symptoms does a person cease becoming contagious or being contagious, sorry?
Um usually it's about um from the onset of symptoms. Uh it's usually about ten days when they cease, but we have people, we have people, we we put, we put people uh in quarantine for fourteen days after their symptom onset. Uh or or their date of diagnosis, if they don't have symptoms. And and we think that after that time, they are no longer infectious uh um. Uh in the community, probably it may be that with the Delta virus, that time is slightly shorter, but we haven't changed the rules yet. So it's fourteen days and we we almost never see anybody being infectious after that period. And that's why, that's why the quarantine period is set at that time.
Excellent. And uh we've seen a bit of information recently about Moderna coming to our shores.
Yeah.
Um can you give us a basic description between the difference between the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines?
Almost none is the basic description, almost none, a different owner. Um but but almost none, they're 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 based on a similar um principle. Uh and they're mRNA viruses, they're giving you a piece of mRNA which makes a protein. Which makes you immune, which stimulates an immune response, which protects you from getting sick. So it's same thing.
Excellent. And uh this is probably a bit of a theoretical one. Uh how how long do you believe Covid could potentially last? Um and let's, I'll reiterate a bit further here. So assuming we get to our eighty percent double dose vaccination. Um do you think there could be potential future lockdowns or border closures? Or we get to a point where the eighty percent herd immunity is enough to keep open?
No, let let me tell you a little story about this because because I think many uh experts around the world think that Covid probably now is going to become. An endemic infection, that is, it will always be with us. And and um and so we have to learn to live with it. Uh and as the years go by, uh its power and and its ability to cause illness and death will diminish. Uh this is what happened in nineteen eighteen when there was a terrible flu epidemic. For a few years after that, the flu was still very deadly and serious, but it had diminishing power. The amazing thing about about Covid is that we've developed a vaccine in a record period of time. So that's enabled us to uh for most people avoid hospitalisation and death if you have the vaccine. Um but I think, uh and and eventually, we hope later in the year, a vaccine will become available for small children. And and then once everyone is vaccinated, uh we're going to have a lot more protection against recurring epidemics of the disease. Hopefully. Uh we won't get any more strains like the Delta strain, which are even even worse than the Delta strain. Uh um and and cause uh more maiming uh than this one has. But but um it's quite likely that that um that this disease will be around for a long time. But what we hope is that um is that its impact on our health. And the health of our vulnerable populations such as the elderly and people with chronic disease will diminish as the years go by. In nineteen eighteen, it took three, four or five years for the effects of this nasty influenza virus really to disappear and to stop causing. Uh uh serious disease. Uh I think, I think um it's a hundred years later. Uh we will have, we haven't, we're only starting now to get effective treatments against this uh virus. And I would think that they will emerge in the next couple of years. Uh and and more and more people will get vaccinated and hopefully uh the crisis will abate. That would be, and I think already in many countries in the world, people are starting to live with this virus uh and for their lives to get back to normal. Uh and I hope that that will continue um in coming months and years.
Excellent. And uh we've got the next one from Sharon and David. And um guys, uh just jump in if I haven't interpreted your question correctly. Um I think what they're trying to ask is if they have had Covid before, um and another member of their household. Also then becomes positive for Covid. Um is there a reason why they then need to isolate? Does your body create any sort of antibodies that would stop you from passing the vaccine, uh the virus on?
It certainly does. It certainly does. But we have seen reinfection with the virus. No, no question about that. There's reinfection. It's just like the flu. Um immunity is not perfect. Um but hopefully, if you if you have the flu jab or if you've had that version of flu already this year. The illness you get will be less severe. But but you you always have to be, you you are certainly not um. You don't have a suit of armour uh to this uh to this virus. Um if if you've already had it, you'll get less severe disease. But but it certainly can infect you more than once. Look, I I mean, there aren't many diseases where that doesn't happen. Measles is one, you only get that once. Uh but we 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 already know that this disease can reinfect people.
Excellent. I think that uh works well with the next question as well. So um even after getting the two jabs is uh, why do you think people still catch Covid? Or can still catch Covid?
Yeah, they they can. Immunity, i- i- immunity is uh is always relative. Uh um some people will mount a stronger immune response than others. Uh people who are elderly, generally you're immune. Uh, people who are elderly, uh, generally your immune, your ability to mount an immune response diminishes as the years go by. So uh, uh, people who are older can't mount as a strong an immune response, and that's why they're more vulnerable. But we do know that um, people of all ages are protected from he- death and serious illness by having the vaccine. So so um, I I think we can be confident that uh, the worst excesses of this virus can be uh, can be met by getting high rates of vaccination in our community.
Excellent. And from a a health perspective, uh, for asylum seekers that come to Australia without any form of identification, how could they access the vaccine?
Uh, if they just roll up to the vaccine hubs, they will be vaccinated. There's no barrier, there is no barrier. That's really important, particularly in this municipality. Uh, I, can I just say a little bit about about the epidemic in Cumberland? Uh, um, because uh, it has been one of the worst hit, um, the worst hit uh, uh, local government areas in in New South Wales and in Australia. I can, I can report um pleasingly tonight that we're beginning to see uh cases fall in Cumberland, which is fantastic news. And I think it's in part due to the 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 great response from our community to get vaccinated, but we can't be complacent. Uh, um, uh, and there's there's many factors in Cumberland that uh, that that have perhaps made it take off here. I think um, I think uh, we do know that there's a fair bit of um overcrowding in some of the dwellings in Cumberland. And that's certainly a risk factor. Um, uh, people, lots of people are still working all over Sydney, and that's been a risk factor in construction sites and factories. Uh, uh, so so there are plenty of risk factors in Cumberland, but but um, the great response in terms of getting tested and getting vaccinated, I think, looks like it's beginning to have uh an effect. And uh, let's hope in the next few days, that effect can continue.
Excellent. And I think we've already gone through uh the difference between the two vaccines, which you cleared up for us. Uh, in terms of Australian citizens looking to return home, um, is the M R N A vaccine Sinopharm enough? Or is there something else they should be getting to try and come back?
Sinopharm is the Chinese vaccine. I don't think it is an M R N A vaccine unless I, I mean, there's a number of Chinese vaccines, so. Uh, but I I didn't believe it was a an M R N A vaccine. Uh, um, uh, um, and there are some issues about acceptability of of Sinopharm in some countries. So um, uh, so the whole issue of the acceptability of vaccine vaccination is far from settled. Uh, a- and um, and even some of the vaccines that that we're having here aren't, um, it's not completely clear whether they'll be accepted by um, uh, authorities in every country in the world. So that's a matter which has to be resolved, but I think as we move into a phase where the the airlines get back into business and 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 the world gets back into business, uh, there'll be a rush to resolve those difficulties.
And uh, just in your experience so far, do most countries have some form of M R N A vaccine available? Or is that limited to certain countries?
Um, um, as I said, I I I I I do know that there are many, many vaccines in operation in China, and I I wasn't aware that any of them are M R N A, but I'm I'm not fully informed about that. Um, uh, India has had its own vaccine production. Uh, uh, and I think um, I think AstraZeneca has been the main uh, uh, form of vaccination in India. But I I again, I can't be quite a chapter and verse on that. I I don't really know. Uh, um, uh, and um, you know, there there is, there is a global uh rush, of course, to get vaccines to the whole world. And and companies like Pfizer and Moderna and Johnson and Johnson are uh, and AstraZeneca are all competing. And um, I I I think it's important uh, at this stage of the epidemic to uh, and I heard saying the other day, the best vaccine in the world is the one that's in your arm. Uh, um, not the one that's sitting on the shelf, because uh, because what's important at the moment to control this epidemic is that people are vaccinated. Um, uh, all the vaccines seem to be very effective in reducing death and reducing hospitalization. That's probably the main message. Um, I know a lot of people were scared about the side effect story with AstraZeneca. But but I've had AstraZeneca, most of the people in the health department I work with have had AstraZeneca. Uh, um, uh, and uh, and we think it's important that people understand that although there are risks, the risks are vanishingly small. And 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 the uh, the protection afforded by the vaccine at this stage in the epidemic is is something we all need to have. Uh, so so uh, that's that's the message I have.
Excellent. And we we've seen a bit of information coming out of uh fully vaccinated countries like Israel recently around potential need for a booster. Um, is there any consideration from Australia's perspective at the moment on how that might play out?
Look, I I think that there is, uh, uh, and and it wouldn't be a surprise, uh, uh, that that we'd need a booster, just like you do with a a flu shot every year. Uh, uh, and that wouldn't be a revolutionary uh, um, uh, thing to happen i- i- in uh, in in vaccinology. Uh, um, but but I think a lot of people are saying, um, isn't it more important to vaccinate everyone in the world, including people in the poorest countries, before the rich countries start hogging the vaccine and getting a boot, a booster? Uh, that's a sentiment which is widely, uh, has been widely canvassed. And once we get two vaccines, um, uh, we we have a good measure of protection, eighty to ninety percent protection from from death and hospitalization. So so um, so, you know, there will be calls for a booster, I'm sure. But I think it's also important that the whole world get vaccinated, because of course, we live in a, in a world where people are traveling all the time. And and whilst ever there's uh COVID in other countries, it's it's always a risk to Australia as well. So so um, so I think there's uh, uh, and you know, uh, it's important to say that vaccination is not just about personal choice, it's a, it's 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 a it it's an act of love in some ways, because it's a recognition that uh, that the community will benefit. And and it's not just about your own concerns about safety, which of course are legitimate. But you do have to think about about the protection of the community at large, because if, as we've seen with the Delta virus, if the virus gets away from us, everyone is at risk. And 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 that's why, that's why uh, uh, vaccination is an unusual thing, because we do know that that we've got to get everyone on board for all of us to be protected. And uh, and and, you know, we really like that message to get through loud and clear.
Excellent. And uh, we've obviously seen some supply issues for the vaccine uh, in recent times. Are they, are we planning to produce any onshore or will we remain in import of vaccine only?
No, I I think uh, the AstraZeneca has been made under license here in um, in Australia. And and um, and I think um, I I think it's quite likely that uh, that similar arrangements will be made with other vaccines uh, in the future. Um, but but um, but you know, you have to understand that the the development of a vaccine to a a brand new virus that no human being has ever, ever had infect them before uh, in a little bit over a year is something of a miracle. Uh, um, you you know, we we still don't have an AIDS vaccine, we don't have a vaccine for T B. Uh, um, uh, there are some diseases which for which it's incredibly difficult to make vaccines. But 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 new technologies uh, and and new discoveries have made um, the development of vaccines uh, um incredibly quick compared to uh, top years gone by, we've seen one develop very quickly for Ebola in recent years, and now one for this virus. It really is uh, an extraordinary thing that that we are able to be protected by a vaccine so soon after it's in it, its appearance in human populations. Yeah.
Excellent. Uh, Abir, would you like to ask your question rather than me just read it out?
Hi, how are you, everyone? Thank you for the meeting. Uh, question one, it's about the possib- possibility about the providing um, a rapid antigen, antigen testing, I mean, the result will be after fifteen minutes, something like that.
Yeah.
Quick and easy test for COVID, like in shops, schools or anywhere with
Yep.
I mean crowded places and active places. And the question then, uh, question two is about the uh, instructions for people, because sometimes, because you know, the stress after someone if if I see like positive, I will be shocked. So after that, we need to deal with this, like psychological and in uh, like some advices, medical advices. So maybe we need some advices, like courses or in like catalogs or anything maybe in in our council, like maybe the the food, the medicine, the what I have to do if I like.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
COVID and I don't like to go to hospital or I can not, or I will not go to hospital, what I can do in my home.
Yeah, yeah. And and um, okay, so so the first question, uh, uh, just remind me, the first question was about
So rapid antigen testing will be available in crowded locations?
Rapid antigen testing is a technology which is being used increasingly, particularly in workplaces. And and in the UK, they've used it in schools. I heard an example today of uh, well, it it of a large company that that's done twenty thousand tests in the last few weeks. They found ten cases of of COVID before the person walked into the plant. Uh, and and uh, one of the side effects of doing rapid antigen testing is that it's not always accurate. So they found ten true cases and they found ten that were false positives, but they were able to deal with that very rapidly. And that kept ten cases out of the workplace and it probably um, prevented the factory from closing down and and continuing with production. Uh, and protected fellow workers from being exposed to that. So it certainly does have a place. It's not cheap, not all employers will choose to do it. Um, there is active consideration about whether it can be used uh, as a way to get kids back to school. Uh, I think we will see the rollout of of it in many places in our society as a way to get back to normal life. Uh, but it's not, it's not, uh, it's not a panacea, it's it's not going to be something which will solve every problem. Um, um, kids, for example, won't like having so- something stuck up their nose every day. That's that will definitely meet resistance there. Uh, um, and 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 then you have to run around chasing after false positives and that can cause a lot of mayhem. Uh, um, so so it is a potential tool which can be used, but whether it 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 gains widespread use, I think we just have to wait and see. Um, and getting to the second question of empowering people to know what to do when they, when they get COVID, uh, that's very important. Uh, um, uh, and of course, it is a, uh, um, it is a serious infection. It's important to say, as I think was mentioned in the slides, that for most people, uh, it passes with relatively little, little uh, problems. Uh, it's only in a minority of people uh, where where serious symptoms develop. And um, and so, um, and so the principles that we work by here, uh, when a family becomes infected, when someone in a family becomes infected, for example, is we try and separate the infected person from the rest of their family. Now, in the earlier parts of the epidemic, we we were able to um, send the infected person to a special hotel called special health accommodation and keep them separate from the rest of the family. And that prevented the family from becoming infected. That's become harder and harder to do as as we got more case numbers, because these hotels, the 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 these it's now the biggest hospital in New South Wales, these special hotels, it's got thousands of people in it. And it's very hard to get people in and 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 so families are having to isolate from each other in their home. And in many homes, particularly in Cumberland, that's proving to be impossible. And we're seeing large families all get infected, and that's not an outcome we want to see. So so yes, um, but if you do have the ability in your home to isolate from uh, um, your other family members, having separate bathrooms, bedrooms, uh, eating facilities, um, then it is possible to um, ma- ensure that you don't get infected. But but it's it's for many households, it's very difficult. So so we are still trying, we're we're thinking of establishing a special ho- hotel here in Western Sydney so that we can do the same thing that we've done in other parts of the city in recent months. Um, we're at a particularly difficult stage because we are seeing hundreds of cases every day. And of course, it's very difficult to deal with every family's problem. We're also delayed in actually reaching families and giving them the information they need. And we're working really hard at the moment to try and bridge that gap. Um, uh, so, but I think that the the tail off in cases in the last few days in Cumberland is very promising. And I believe, you know, we would like to think it's due to some of our efforts in and the efforts of the community to get tested and get vaccinated and 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 with any luck, that those trends will continue. So so I I know I haven't answered all of your questions about what to do. There's plenty of information available on the New South Wales Health website about what to do if a family member um, gets COVID. Uh, uh, um, and perhaps we could talk to council if there are any gaps, if there's stuff in language, if we need to translate into languages. There's already a a lot of information available in other languages. And we can work with councils to uh, to make sure that people's needs are being addressed, if that's okay.
Yeah, and and I'll um, I'll provide a link to uh, what we're calling our support um forum at the moment, where you can uh, we we want you to minimize the risks to your immediate household by, um, as was mentioned in the presentation, visiting family members. You know, under goodwill that you're delivering food, but sort of engaging and and potentially picking up the virus. So um, if it's a food need, a clothing need, any sort of basic essential items, um, counselor are helping to either support that directly or engaging with local NGOs and charities to meet that need for yourself or your extended family members. So um, I'll include that in the chat, um, or and you're welcome to contact council as well to have a a conversation with me. Um, but we're definitely um, helping to support, because we understand health is inundated with um, positive cases. So as uh, Dr. Corbett said, they may not get to you immediately after a positive case has been identified. Um, but we're kind of helping in in assisting in covering that gap. So if you need those essential items to, you know, support your family, um, you'll be able to reach out to council and we can get that organized for you. So hopefully that answers what you're after, Abir.
Could I just say one more thing?
Yes.
One of the things that's really surprised us about this epidemic and this virus is its ability to be transported but in the air. Um, um, you know, with coughs and colds, we always thought it was sneezing on people and and touching surfaces and and uh, um, uh, but what we're seeing with this epidemic is the virus, the the people who are, especially in the few days before they be get symptoms, just by ordinary breathing, talking, uh, they can emit virus from their lungs which can infect people in a household quite easily, not just people up close, but people a few meters away from them. And that's the scary thing about this virus, it has the ability to be very infectious uh, in indoor settings. And and of course, um, families, large families, uh, you can imagine if there's a person in in a large family that's that's enjoying family life together, it's very easy for this virus to travel through the family. So you have to be, you have to wear masks inside. Um, uh, the the risk, the things that increase the risk of transmission is exercise and and uh, breathing up inside. So having a gym in your house isn't probably a great idea. Uh, uh, um, uh, uh, singing and talking loudly, we know that 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 really increases the 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 amount of virus that a person will emit if they're, if they're sick. Uh, um, so there is some guidance about how to minimize risks in houses, but uh, but uh, we also think that probably the best bet is to sep- physically separate infected and non-infected family members. About eighty percent of the infections we see is transmitted in households. So that's where we've got to target a lot of our thinking and prevention activity. And 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 of course, for many families, the options are are fairly uh slender as to what you can actually do.
Excellent. If um, if you do contract the virus, um, once you have had it, what sort of uh, delay period would there be before you're eligible to actually get the vaccine and it's still, you know, effective for your body?
At the moment, the recommendation is six months. You will have some natural immunity from uh, uh, fro- from the the viral infection that you that's, you will have an immune response. And and after that, it's recommended that after after about six months, you can talk with your doctor about that. But that's the normal period of time that's been recommended at the moment.
Excellent. Um, and Sharon, you've got a question here around uh, council ranges and outdoor gatherings. Um, unfortunately, the police powers haven't been extended to council ranges. Um, so they are are not able to go down and and move people on. Um, that it's a, it would be um, up to you to contact uh, either the police directly through your local police area unit number or to contact crime stoppers to report um, any sort of uh, gatherings that may be against the the health orders that are currently out. Um, so unfortunately, it's not something that council can step in and and manage directly. Um, okay, so we've got um, so if you're over sixty, are there any opportunities to uh, get the Pfizer vaccine at all? Is there any way that you could get that instead of the AstraZeneca?
Um, uh, you can talk to your doctor about that. Um, and doses of Pfizer are increasing And doses of Pfizer are increasingly becoming available. Yeah, the best thing to do is to talk to your GP and see what opportunities are available, particularly if there are some reasons that you, you medically might need to. Get Pfizer rather than AstraZeneca, but, but. But that's the best advice at the moment.
Excellent. And you've already touched base on overseas organizations are looking at vaccines for younger children. So we won't answer that one again. However, on the return to school from October twenty five going forward. Is, in your opinion, are we minimizing the risk to children still in their return? Or is there concern that sending them back to school at this point in time may increase the risk of them contracting the virus?
Yeah, there are a lot of concerns about that and. We're not so concerned that the children themselves will get ill. But what we are concerned about is that they will then transmit it to other family members. That, that's, that's the real concern. Is that kids are very good at giving infections to one another. And, and then they're very good at giving it to other family members. So, so that's the main concern and ultimately why we'd like to see kids vaccinated as well. But there's a tremendous harm, of course, as well at keeping kids out of school. It's denying them a whole lot of stimulation and, and development. So in making an important decision like this, we have to weigh out the harms and the benefits. And I think that's what the government is doing at the moment. And, you know, there's a lot of pressure, of course, on getting kids back to school. And because, of course, kids aren't at school, then parents have to stay at home and the whole economy is impacted. So these are very difficult but important decisions. And, and, and I think some of the. It's not, it's the medical advice is, is working hard to try and concoct a best. A best compromise, I suppose, between those, those rather conflicting outcomes.
Do you think there would ever be a time where the vaccine could be taken in tablet form as opposed to an injection?
I doubt it at this stage. I, I mean, it could be, a skin patch might be, might be something that would work. But there's a whole lot of new vaccine delivery technology that's coming online and. Nothing surprises me what medical technology can come up with. So, but at the moment, we're stuck with the needle. And, and that's what we've got to do for the next couple of years.
Great. And Savenica, you may have missed earlier, but if you either don't have a Medicare or you've got issues with your Medicare card. You can still access Kudos Arena and the Macquarie Fields Centres. You can turn up and get your vaccination without requiring to show a Medicare card.
You can.
Okay. So we did, I think we already touched on that you can still carry the virus even if you've contracted it previously or after you've had the vaccine.
You can get reinfected, that's for sure.
Okay, so for twelve to fifteen year olds. Is there going to be an option for vaccination when they return to school, like at the school? Or will they need to go to the GP or the sort of the super clinics that have been set up at the moment?
Look, I think there's a lot of work going into facilitating that, that, that next phase of the vaccine program. And the details aren't all at hand yet, but, but they will become very clear soon, I'm sure. I'm sorry, I can't give you definite information about that right now.
In terms of the ingredients in the vaccine, there's probably too many to list. But are there particular ones that you think would be of interest to, to call out? I guess in, in terms of if you were allergic to anything that might be in one versus the other. Or something that maybe they should consider when they talk to their GP about which one to get?
No, there, there's nothing that's been highlighted in that regard. There, there's, there's a range of side effects which you know about. And, and there are some, there are some people with some very rare medical conditions who are advised not to get certain kinds of vaccines. But that's extremely rare. We have a big school vaccination program every year. And every year we get kids who are allergic to, to vaccines. And it doesn't say, you know, the, the reason doesn't seem to be clear. It's not something that, that, that's, that we ever get to the bottom of in terms of. What's in the product itself. But, but we have no reason to think that these vaccines are any different to any other in that regard. We always assume that a tiny proportion of people will have an adverse reaction to vaccines. And that's why we get people to wait after they have their vaccines. We watch them closely to make sure that they're not happening. Because most adverse reactions occur in the first few minutes after a vaccine. But we do that for all vaccines because, because. You know, there's a lot of diversity in human populations. People react to medicines in different ways. But by the exercising of caution and by understanding. Who's at risk, we, we can minimize the harm that comes from adverse reactions to this and other vaccines.
Excellent. And I think we're starting to hear that there may be another potential strain, I think in South America at the moment. Is it likely that additional vaccines may need to be, or changes to the vaccine may need to occur? Or booster shops may, booster shops may be needed for that purpose?
Yeah, the future, the future, this virus has done nothing else but surprises since it began. And, and the emergence of the Delta strain is, has been. An extraordinary thing because we've seen a virus emerge which is thousand times more infectious than its previous incarnation. And other, other mutations might come along. What's encouraging though is, is that the, the vaccines seem to be just as effective against the Delta as they are against others. By and large, and particularly in their ability to prevent death and severe illness. So hopefully that will happen with the, with the other variants that come along. It's really hard to predict these things. And. We just, we just have to wait and see. I mean, I think, I think the world has, has. Has ramped up its ability to survey. Populations and, and look at the harms caused by vaccines, by new viruses. Our scientists have been able to respond rapidly to any changes they may need to make to the vaccine or, or treatments. So I, I think, I mean, you know, the world will be focused on this disease until it's well under control. I'm absolutely sure of that. And, and so far, we've had astounding success in being able to match whatever the virus throws at us.
And we've got a bit of further information from Sonia who had asked about overseas vaccinations that are available. From your, and you may not be able to answer this question, but from your understanding, is there anything that an Australian citizen could do to put themselves in a position of returning home? Or could they return home into isolation, for example, and, you know, get the vaccine while they're in isolation? Or is there any way that they could, you know, because they can't get what's being offered in Australia at the moment, they could return home and, and I guess get that to, to stay in the country? What, do you know anything around that?
People overseas who want to come home who aren't vaccinated yet, is that right?
From my understanding of, from Sonia, she has had vaccination overseas, but it may not meet what, you know, Australia is recommending. What could she do to put herself in a position to be able to return home?
Yeah, look, look, it's a bit of a grey area at the moment. If she's talking about Sina Farm, I think, I think that's unclear. I, I think the Australian authorities will probably require. Vaccination with one of the, the vaccines that they approve of, that the TGA approves of.
Is there a listing on their website for overseas vaccines that aren't necessarily provided here within the country?
I think I'd have to get back to you about that. I'm, I'm not sure about that detail. I'm sorry. The, the, the. The requirements at the moment are very strict and I guess. I guess. You know, once Australia reaches its vaccination target, it will start to look seriously at how the borders get reopened. And, and that's, and that will have to involve a consideration of, of. Whether we think, you know, how, how do we, how do we know that people who are saying they're vaccinated are adequately vaccinated when they come here? And, and that's going to have to be a part of our, our normalization of COVID.
So Sonia, we'll take that offline and hopefully we can, we can find some further information that we can share with the community. In terms of the origination of, I guess, the, the vaccine. You know, how it was set up, is it, was it based on the SARS virus vaccine previously? Did it come, someone's potentially saying maybe nineteen ninety eight, not sure where they got that, that date from. But was this a previous incarnation of the vaccine?
No, people have been working on new vaccine technologies for some years. And, and yes, it did begin with the SARS virus, but because that virus was defeated by traditional public health measures. Research on that more or less stopped, but, but it had a legacy. And, and the development of mRNA technology has been very important. Development of viruses as vehicles for. For vaccines has also been important. There was an Australian invention which didn't quite get over the finishing line. So there has been a huge amount of research on. On new vehicles for, for vaccine delivery. And, you know, my understanding is that. One of the great things about mRNA vaccines is that they can be rapidly adapted for new variants that come along. And so the, the long lead times that normally accompany vaccine development. May not be true for, for any new vaccines that have to be developed for, for new coronavirus variants.
Excellent. And sorry, just for everyone that's asking, my name is Daniel from the Community Development Team. Just in case you need to contact council and ask for myself. So here's an interesting one. If you unknowingly have the virus and you have had your first or second doses of vaccine. What sort of impacts does that play on, on how effective, I guess, the vaccine is for you?
Vaccine won't work until two weeks after you have. And, and so, and so if you get, if you get it at the same time, unfortunately you'll get the illness. Whatever that may mean. So, so, so the vaccine, and, and of course, getting two doses, it gives you the maximum protection. So, so if you, if you get an infection any time before that, you won't have an optimal immune response.
Does that make the, the double dose less effective than someone who has not had the virus? No, okay. This one's probably a bit too political, but I'll, I'll put it to you for your opinion anyway. Do you think that there'll be any sort of mandatory vaccination requirements for younger children, so under twelve? I guess similar to our normal vaccine procedures that we have?
Look, I, I think this is an important question for us as a, as a society. I, I note that President Biden is making a lot of noise at the moment about saying the people who aren't getting vaccinated are holding us all back. And, and of course, he's got a big problem in America with vaccine resistance. And we, we have a lot of people here who are similarly inclined. It, it does come, I mean. Australians, from what we've seen, New South Wales. Australians by and large seem very willing to take the vaccine to protect themselves and their families. It's impossible to vaccinate everyone because other, some people, a small proportion will object on a whole range of grounds. Mostly, when vaccine levels get above ninety percent, that's enough to protect everybody. Because you don't get the disease moving from one population to another. It just depends really on, on, on how infectious the virus is. Because, but we think that, that coronavirus is about the same infectiousness as chickenpox. And most of you who've got little kids will know that. When chickenpox comes to a school, everyone gets it. And so. And so. You've got to get vaccination rates for chickenpox well above ninety percent to stop that happening. And, and I think that's probably what we'll have to do here. And that will require people to start thinking about. You know, what, what, what. What do we want our, our friends and families, you know, do, do we find it? A good thing or an acceptable thing for them not to be vaccinated if they're coming to your family picnic? Because, and these are things we're going to have to, we make decisions like this all the time, I guess, about smoking and about all sorts of things. But, but, but I think what will emerge is that, is that vaccination is a way out of this horrible pandemic. And, and that probably people will start to. Think about it as, as, about what their, what their responsibilities are to the community, not just about what their own fears and, and concerns are about themselves.
And in, in terms of something you touched on earlier, so someone that does contract the virus. Creates some form of natural response to it for the future. How would you see that in terms of someone that's had first or second doses versus someone that has the natural response? Would they be, would any of that be on par? Obviously, it's important now that we're getting people vaccinated. I, I guess this may be more relevant for someone that isn't eligible to get the vaccination because of a medical issue or something. Would they have some sort of protection, you think, in comparison to first or second?
Look, I'm not an expert on this, I have to say. A lot of my colleagues are more experts than me about, about this particular question. Generally speaking, the natural infection confers a, a strong immune response. But vaccination is still recommended. The relative strength of that response is something which I guess will emerge in research over the next couple of years. Because I will be able to see what happens when waves of infection hit a community. And whether natural infection or immunization actually works better. But I think at the moment, it's probably a little early to tell. But I, I'm sure that sort of information will emerge in the next year or so.
Let's hope, like when I was a child, we don't start having COVID parties like they had for chickenpox to try and encourage that amongst children.
They, they used to, yes. Well, particularly German measles because, because of its effects on the unborn fetus. And there were certainly rebeller parties, they were called. And, but as you say, they used to have chickenpox parties as well. And, but COVID's too serious an illness to have a party about it, so.
Definitely. We've got a nice shout out here to, to thank yourself and the, the gentleman from New South Wales Health. Everyone's really appreciating your responses tonight. I think it's a really good opportunity to be able to ask questions directly from you. Just a few more, I think we've got till we're done. So Aziz, I think I did cover your question, but is there something else that you would like to ask? Are you still there, Aziz? Oh, it might come back to Aziz. Jules, would you like to ask you a question?
Hi there. Thank you for. Me, for this Zoom session. It was very informative. And I'd just like to say, for the people that have, haven't been unvaccinated. And they have contracted the COVID nineteen. Is there any chance that they can go to get some sort of information to say that, that, that they have had the COVID nineteen?
That's a good question. The, that hasn't, that hasn't been resolved yet. You mean a certificate saying you've had it, just like a certificate just saying you've been vaccinated?
Yeah, just so you could show that to your workplace.
Do you mean in terms of the six month period before you're eligible?
No, no, what he's saying is that if you've got immunity from, from having had the disease, should be allowed back to your workplace that requires vaccine, vaccination. It's a good question and I don't know the answer. But it's something which will emerge. I, I mean, I think, I think the vaccination requirement will stand. And, and the only way of really telling that you've got immunity is to have a blood test and see what your level of immunity to COVID is. And that might be a way of resolving the problem in the future. You can tell whether you've mounted a good response or not. But in terms of certification, that question hasn't yet raised itself enough to be a. You know, I, I'm sure that question will need resolution in the months to come.
Okay, great. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I wasn't able to answer.
Aziz, we've got you back on board, I think, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. I thank you so much. And I would like to, to thank to Dr. and the, and Cumberland Council for organizing this. And just would like to get some clarification from the doctor. And just would like to get some clarification from the doctor. And the doctor said that six months later, you can have your, you can have your vaccination after you've been attracted COVID. And and what about if the person, like, you know, he he gets the vaccination, he he got, he got the chap? But he or she doesn't know that he or she had the vi- and the the virus. So unintentionally, the person gets the fax.
Yeah. No, there'll be no problem.
Would he be or she be facing a serious illnesses because he got the, he got infected and he got the chap?
No, no, that would, that that would be fine. There'd be, there'd be, there'd be no problem with that.
All right. The second question I would like to get clarification, if you've been infected by COVID and you get a recovery, of course, and you get recovery. And, you know, now there are a lot of restrictions being eased for only double dose vaccinated people. And what happens to those who are recovering and cannot have vaccination and after, before six months, you know, would they be having the same rights as vaccinated people?
Well, I think at the, I I think at the moment, I think at the moment, the answer is no, but it's a very good question. And and I think I think that we will need to develop a policy around this. There, at the moment, there is not one. But it's a very legitimate question. And I guess, I guess it's never risen its head in in Australia because up until very recently, so few people comparatively had been infected. So so, you know, before June, probably less than a few percent of people had actually had the infection. So so it didn't, it wasn't relevant. But now with so many people having had the disease, but still it's only, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand or so out of the population of millions. The question will need to be answered. But at the moment, I think what the only, the only exemption or concession being given is to the vaccinated. But but it may well emerge that having had the disease is 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 okay as well, but it's not, it's not a policy at the moment.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Georgia, question from you. Georgiana, sorry?
Yeah, hi. Hi, yeah, just just a couple of questions. Number one is that it was announced on this morning's news that that firefighters are happening to work as paramedics, helping ambulance drivers during the pandemic. Now, obviously, healthcare workers have reached a breaking point. Is that also because that there is a shortage of paramedics and doctors and nurses as well within that particular area?
I don't know what area, I don't know what area you're talking about, but but there certainly are shortages because lots of nurses and doctors have had to go off as close contacts of patients, and that's been a big problem in our system. And and I didn't, I hadn't heard about the firefighters, but that doesn't surprise me.
Oh, okay. So obviously, if they have to work as paramedics, they're obviously then replacing. I mean, sorry, I mean, to say, if the firefighters are working as paramedics, they're obviously doing a replacement for paramedics just to give help first, give first aid to the needy in in preventing and contracting the virus. Is that right?
Look, I'm I'm unaware of of who's, who's stepping in for who at the moment. If you're saying that there were firefighters, that may well be the case, but but there are, you know, there there are. You know, the health system is stretched beyond its limit at the moment. And and particularly in the intensive care wards and the emergency departments. And so all sorts of actions are being taken, which we wouldn't think about in normal times. But but these are emergency situations and a whole lot of different solutions are being sought and found.
Okay. Yeah. And also also too, does the virus, I mean, sorry, I mean, to say, how does the virus get fragmented into the sewage treatment plants?
Oh, well, it's, 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 I guess, a pretty obvious fact that, I mean, coronavirus is generally infect both the lungs and the gut. And so and and we se- we secrete viruses that were infected within our, in our waste. And that gets into the sewer. And we've been able, during this pandemic, for the first time in my working lifetime, to use the sewage as a way of finding out where the infection is. And it's been remarkably accurate. So if we get, if we get, if we find the virus in parks in Western New South Wales, we say, well, how come we don't know of any cases here? And then we look hard and we find them. So so it's been a remarkably sensitive and method to to try and map where the virus is showing up. And and if we get a sewage detection in the town, we go hunting for the virus very hard. So it's been very useful and helped us to control the epidemic in the last couple of years.
Okay, I think that's all. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thanks, Georgiana. And I'm just conscious of time that we did advertise this to finish at eight o'clock, and we've almost reached nine o'clock. So I might just finish off with the last question from Abi.
Maybe it's a funny question, but I'd like to know if we will get rights for asking people if they have the vaccine or they are fully vaccinated or not in the future. Like, if I want to deal for someone and maybe he will be close to me, like Barbara or anywhere.
Yeah, I I mean,
Do I have right to ask him if he's fully vaccinated or not? And maybe that causes some problems in the future if I ask this question.
Well, I think, I I can't think of any reason why businesses couldn't ask that, for example. And then whether you have a right to exclude people or not, I guess these are legal questions which have to be answered. But but my own son lives in Cyprus and he has a vaccine. He has to show his vaccine I D every time he he goes into a restaurant.
I think we need some, some, some badge.
Yeah, and so, and so
Only vaccine.
And the vaccine, I mean, the idea of a vaccine passport or a vaccine card, these are ideas that are being floated at the moment. I guess the lawyers will have a look at it in terms of discrimination. But in many parts of the world, it's already being used as a way to open up the society and 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 to assure people that that they're they're in a safe environment. And there's people who will be opposed to that point of view. And I think we'll, we'll, we'll land somewhere in the middle, I guess. Because because I think people will need some reassurance that that going about their normal business is safe. And and people who are unvaccinated definitely present a risk. So so I think we're, we're going to be treading on new ground here in terms of what we require of citizens to protect themselves and others as we go forward.
Maybe we need some rules, like sterilize everywhere or make everything clean.
That that's part of it. But unfortunately, as I've said earlier, a lot of the infection is is through the air, through airborne, through ordinary breathing, and so you wouldn't know. And 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 just because someone, I mean, of course, we think we have to be hygienic as well and wash surfaces down. That's an important part of it. But we do think airborne infection is an important part of this, of this virus. And 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 so that means we have to be cautious about about how we gather together with other people, how we enjoy each other's company, et cetera. And that can, that can, I mean, it it may change the way we do things, at least for a while. And and I think pandemics have a way of doing that. You know, so the the, the, many of the rules and the conventions that we adopt in terms of hygiene and social interaction have been shaped over the decades and the centuries by what's happened with pandemics. And and I think, for example, mask wearing should remain a part of what we do in indoor spaces for a long time to come. I think we're stuck with masks for a while, and I guess it might be a situation like many countries in Asia, like Korea and China and Japan, where it's just a normal thing for people in the winter especially to wear masks. And and that might be where we have to get to in the future, at least for the next few years. And a passport, a vaccine passport may be a part of that array of of measures.
Excellent. Well, we might finish it there. That has been a very informative session. Thank you to Dr. Corbett, Ellen Andrew and Daniel from New South Wales Health. This recording is going to be put onto Cumberland Council website. So if you suddenly think of something and you want to double check if it was answered in this session, it should hopefully be up within the next day or so. I've also put the link in the chat for our support form. So again, if yourself or any of your family members are in need of food, clothing, financial support, please reach out through that form. So even if you haven't been, you haven't contracted the virus, but you're still isolating for any particular reason or you need help, please reach out to council and we will either support you ourselves or put you in touch with our local services. And definitely recommend visiting the New South Wales Health website to make sure that you're getting up to date information, particularly as Moderna becomes more readily available. And, you know, we're looking at information as we become less restricted in movement in society. Please make sure that you're remembering to to keep up social distancing and and face masks and and cleaning as was recommended in the presentation tonight. And obviously, you're eligible to go and get the vaccine by walk up at Kudos or Macquarie Fields or visiting your local G P or or chemist that are offering it at the moment. And just a final note that, again, tonight, we weren't able to provide any individual medical advice. That's where a recommendation is to speak to your G P. So if you have any further direct concerns related to yourself, please make sure you reach out to them. And hopefully, your local G P will be able to support you in in better understanding which vaccine is available for you if you're eligible. Dr. Corbett, did you want to finish with anything? Any final thoughts?
Yeah, it it's just that, you know, Cumberland is still a danger zone for this virus. It's important to know that. And and we have, and, you know, we 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 probably, we anticipate it's going to be another six to eight weeks before the cases fall back to to single figures, let's hope. And and so if we need to re reset in a few weeks' time, I'm happy to have another forum to answer people's concerns because it's really important that that we do everything we can to to get numbers in Cumberland down. We're a bit worried that testing has gone off the boil a little bit. And and we don't know if that's why the numbers have come down. So we just have to keep our eyes really carefully fixed on Cumberland in the next few weeks to make sure we're staying on track. And and we'd like to work with council to to make that happen.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for coming this evening. Hopefully, we're able to answer some of your questions and provide you a bit more clarification around what's out there and how to support you. As I said, visit all those identified spots that we said for any further information. And hopefully, everyone has a good night and you enjoy the the less restrictions as we move further forward. And, you know, we gather that herd immunity. So thank you again, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you very much.